As far as accountability goes on, not only how we spend the funds, but like how we justify it, a policy in place for it, a matrix to show the, to sustain or to, to, a matrix to show.
How we judge, is that like?
Yeah, yeah. And, and not only that, it sounds like it could possibly not even be allowed from what I was just hearing from Nathan. Nathan, I know you're there.
I am.
Maybe if you could go into some, some more detail, maybe it sounded like you knew, you discovered or heard more of an update?
So back in, I want to say around about February, some changes went through the Johnson County plan. And as I recall, it was Johnson, it was Johnson County extending aid to this Escuchamivoz group that kind of got the ball rolling on their requests. Johnson Counties, I don't know whether it was their attorneys. I was trying to piece it together from articles and the like, who it was that informed them, whether it was their internal folks or attorneys or whatnot. Doesn't really matter. But they decided that the program that they had originally envisioned when they approved it, namely dispersing aid to undocumented folks in lieu of their having, not having received stimulus payments and the like during COVID, would no longer work. So basically they've done, as I can, as I can see, two major things to change their program. Number one, rather than just targeting undocumented workers, they have had to open it up to anyone who was negatively impacted or suffered a negative economic impact as a result of COVID. Obviously, that's a, a much larger, potentially unlimited group of individuals. So they've had to drastically expand the eligibility. And I think that's because of the, the, the requirements that it, you know, provide a proportional, a proportionality to the economic impact suffered. And that's, that was in our memo. The second thing that they have done is drastic, well, not drastically, completely instituted a new documentation requirement scheme. Originally, the, I believe it was one of the supervisors of Johnson County had inquired of Treasury Officer Namrata, if I'm getting that name right, whether self-adestation and identification would be sufficient. She had indicated in circumst- certain, certain circumstances, it might be appropriate. Since then, Johnson County has gone to a list of documentation and it's available on their website, but basically it's, it's an entire spreadsheet full of documentation requiring, well, I'm not gonna, I don't want to waste your time by reading it, but fat tax return, a government ID, a passport, utility bills, national ID card for birth certificates and the like. So the.
No, there's, there's options.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, there's, it's a, it's a table. There's, there's three categories and you've got to provide at least one, sometimes two from each of the categories. So, but the, the upshot is there are significant documentation and identification requirements. The conversations I had had, and not in connection with my representation of the city, but that, that I had previously with Escuchamivoz is that they would be very reluctant or unable to provide a lot of the things that are requested by Iowa City. So Councilwoman Dominguez, I know you had indicated, I can't remember the gentleman's name. I want to say Andy or Andrew, had had maybe some, some guidance for us. I have not seen any of that. The, the guidance that, that Lee forwarded to me was previously upon, I think after our last meeting, I'd already seen one was the letter from the Treasury Officer Namrata and another was, I can't recall what it was off the top of my head, but something I'd already seen prior to the preparation of the memo. So I guess what I'm saying is if, if you do this, you've got to, well, you'd be well advised to do something like what Johnson County is doing. And that is both along the, the proportionality axis of it in terms of who is eligible and then the documentation requirements. Because I think they, I think they found out that what they had proposed was not gonna fly in terms of justifying the payments and they would be potentially liable if they were unable to do the documentation as required.
And when did this all transpire? Was this just in the last couple of weeks?
No, so this is, this has been an ongoing process since February. It looks like that's when the article started that a few of the Board of Supervisors members in Johnson were perturbed that what they originally wanted to do, they could not do. Their, their counsel was telling, was telling them something else. In April, I believe, is when this documentation regime came out. And I've, I haven't looked in the last couple of weeks, but this has been in place for a couple of months now.
Yeah. And, and since then, Nathan, they've come out with the final rule, which gave more leniency to some of those eligibility requirements and what documentations have been, are needed to provide, right?
The final, you mean, you're talking about Treasury?
Yeah, the, the final rule versus the interim rule. The final rule came out in April, or it was started, implemented in April of 2022. And that provided an expansion, that's the 400 and some page document that I tried to print out, but ran out of paper.
Right.
And they actually, from what I understood, they expanded one of those categories to be household assistance, household aid, in, in addition to what you had listed in the original opinion. And then also they very thoroughly clarify what is deemed disproportionately impacted community, which because of the makeup of our, of our city, I'd like to understand that more of how that versus Johnson County as a whole, where there's a difference there. Because we are, you know, a majority minority city. And in, in the final rule, they continuously talk about the COVID, COVID impacting Black and Hispanic individuals in particular and low income individuals at a disproportionate, in a disproportionate way. So that's kind of where I was thinking. And I did see your, your notes that we, of the recommendations of what we would need to do and analysis of the, of the, what's the word you called it? The, not the impact, but the.
Assessing effectiveness?
Yeah. No, not assessing effectiveness.
The outcomes?
The proportion, the proportionality.
Right. So just a really quick address, you said the interim final rule had been out for a while. It was the final rule that came out, oh, in March or April of this year.
April 2022, yeah.
Correct. Yeah. We'd reviewed the final rule prior to finalizing that memorandum. So the, the, there's no doubt about the, the ethnic impact that you had mentioned. What, what gives us pause is determining the proportionality. It'd be one thing to say, you know, Hispanic folks, but without knowing the makeup of the number of undocumented individuals for the community, it'd be virtually impossible to, in our opinion, to assess the proportionality because we can't know how many undocumented folks are unless we're able to count them and for obvious reasons that we're not able to.
Right. And then there is a, a section also in the final rule that talks about individuals that may have been excluded because they're seeking documentation. And so in the immigration process, can't get any federal government or state assistance during, for a period of time. And so they're excluded from that.
And those individuals would be able to document their status within the immigration proceedings. So, you know, there, there's folks who are undocumented here and are pursuing immigration status that would give them legal residency. And then there are those who are probably not. So again, any proportionality assessment is going to require identification of the respective numbers.
Right.
And it's also going to require people to identify whether or not they're in the immigration system.
Right. I don't know if you have anything to add here, but I did highlight a few things that, like interesting things that I just wanted to kind of look into more, that kind of note on that. Feel free to discuss while I look this up. So from what I was remembering reading during the final rule about the household assistance, when providing, and this is again, something that I'd like to look further into, when providing the, the funds to a household, which we do have a lot of mixed status households in, in our city, having one person that would qualify in a household would be deemed appropriate. So that's another thing in addition to the final rule that I didn't see in the interim rule. And basically as a background for those who don't know, and I know you know this, Nathan, but there were so many questions from the community, from the nation, when they proposed the interim rule, how to, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nathan, but this is how I interpret it, how to provide or how to, who to accept to get these funds, basically. That the treasurer for a period of time collected all of these comments and feedback. And then they actually list those in, and that's why the final rule is so long. They list all of the concerns and comments from the community. And then they added what they did to address those, whether, and most of them, they had changed, you know, to address those. They, they changed their policy or they changed the requirements to address those concerns. Some of them, they maintained their opinion that actually, you know, no, we're gonna stay this way. But in what I've read, there was nothing about, well, actually I did a word find in the 400 pages. There was not once mention of undocumented or non-citizen in the whole 400-page opinion. So there, there is a lot of people who are deemed Hispanic because, and that's when they are talking about the excruciating impact of Black and Hispanic communities and how they're 5% more likely to have harms because of COVID-19. I mean, I, I highlighted all of these stats that I can definitely forward if it's.
So that new ruling doesn't talk about folks that are undocumented?
In, in the word function and the fine function that I did in this 400-page document, there was not one undocumented.
I did not see it either.
So what does that mean?
Like, so that means that they didn't. Well, the reason why I found that is because in the, in the opinion that we got, there was a specific, there was a specific, I don't know how to say this, because I know it is confidential, but there was a specific recommendation when we're talking about how to figure out the proportionality and stuff like that. There was a follow-up to kind of the federal, and Nathan, you could probably talk more about this, but the federal guidelines to provide services, they can't discriminate based on race or gender or sex and things like that. So there was something that said, no, that the proposal that we, when we were talking about excluded in essential workers, says it does target undocumented workers who are presumably primarily of Hispanic ethnic origin. So that was a concern that it would disproportionately support a, a population based on race disproportionately to the rest of our citizens. So that's something we would just have to look at in considering, what does that mean? Because we are a majority minority city. And, and to your point, Nathan, I think what you're saying is how do we even know that if we, do we look at Hispanics as a whole or Latinos in a whole in West Liberty compared to folks who aren't? And then how do we analyze that? Do we say, okay, well, 60% of, if that's it, 60% of the people in West Liberty are Hispanic origin or identified as Hispanic? And this document says that this percentage of people, Black or Hispanics, are disproportionately affected because they had this much percentage more of unemployment? They had this much percentage more of death and of medical problems? Is that enough to say, you know, okay, yes, we are a special population, as it also talks about in the final rule, talks about how you, a city can classify their own special population with very specific categories?
So that's absolutely true. My recommendation would always be to find racially neutral characteristics or ethnically neutral characteristics, you know? And the, and those footnotes that reference like the 1.7 more times likely to be hospitalized due to a cardiac event, those sorts of things. Those are obviously nationalized general statistics and can't be, or at least in my opinion, should not be relied upon to arrive at your proportionality finding. Rather, you'd probably be better off at trying to identify a category of best fit that helps the people you want to help, while at the same time is racially neutral and targets as, as, as nearly as possible those most economically disadvantaged by COVID. Now, I, 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 I do take from the lack of inclusion of mention of undocumented individuals in the final rule. I mean, frankly, I, I think that the Biden administration and, and those in it would not give a crap if money went to undocumented workers. I think a Trump administration, or if there's a Republican administration after, let's say in 2025, that administration could very well crack down on that sort of thing. So.
Is that the fear that, like behind the scenes? Because I, I've not heard that, but I can, I mean, that's something we have to consider. We don't want the government to come after us. But then also, how do we look into if we are protected from that? Like, because the final rule literally says that they would go after individuals that were from fraud, you know? So does that even put the city at risk?
Well, I, I, the, the fraud really applies to individuals who provide misrepresentation in order to obtain the ARPA funds. It's not necessarily in the dispersment. However, if the city is found to have improperly dispersed those funds, either because on the front end, they didn't do the, the due diligence or make the proportionality findings, et cetera, or in the backend, they don't have the, the identification and the verification stuff in place, the city can be held liable and those funds could be clawed back. And I know you're, you're still going on this. One thing I did not mention that I thought a lot about since the, I want to say the meeting on the 21st, the one in the library it was, where Escuchamivoz proposed to be the, essentially the distributor of the funds. That gives me great concern because you've got, the city's got an obligation to be able to get to document those. And as I understood it, perhaps I didn't quite understand everything that they were proposing. But as I understood it, the idea was hand that group a check and they're going to just hand out cash to the people that they find appropriate. Iowa City again, or Johnson County again, going back to them as an example, has adopted from the Treasury Department, an approved subrecipient agreement. So basically anytime they've approved ARPA funds, where they hand funds to an organization that will then in turn give those funds to other people, there's a very detailed subrecipient agreement that imposes all those requirements. So I guess that's one other wrinkle, I would say, that if, if, if we do use a, a third party, they need to be held to that same kind of standard. And I think the template agreement proposed or used by the US Treasury Department is, is a good agreement there.
And this would be the same agreement that like, maybe like Denver used, right? So they went through a third-party nonprofit to.
I don't have any idea what Denver did.
So I think another good, good, I mean, more information that would be helpful is how other cities did do it, like Baltimore, Washington DC, Denver.
My only concern is those are not, so for us, we would have to, I think Johnson County is the only one that we could near look up of because it's in the state of Iowa. When you're looking at other cities, they're in other states that are different. They have different set of rules by their state. It's what they can do with public funds.
Yep. You're right. And, and my, another concern of mine is it's going to, this is turning into something that is ultimately going to be much more complex than where I think it is, it much more complex. This is going to involve staffing hours in order to come up with these matrices or come up with these proposals, come up with these, these agreements and policies that we're gonna have to institute and put in place before money is even distributed. I, I've already started all that work here. I've already. It just seems way too complex. My concern too, again, is it needs to really be something that is simple to go into the city for everybody to use because in, in the end, that's what it was meant to be.
I guess just to, on what you're saying, and again, Dina, as a staff member, I appreciate the hours that you've put into looking at and identifying and doing the due diligence. Right off the top of my head is they were going through some things. It's just the cost from a legal perspective, because everything that we come up with is going to have to go through an attorney for legal representation agreement to make sure the auditor of the city to make sure, from a compliance perspective, it'll have to be reviewed as well. And then I'm thinking about, you know, tools and resources. I'll give an example, when I worked for a bank, we had to go through the Patriot Act. We had to utilize resources and search for identification, making sure that the IDs were true identity because there is a liability, just as Nathan's saying, there's a liability upon whoever, the individual who's doing the process. And if they fail to do their due diligence and make sure that they're utilizing that, then that's for you, that, that's that impact or it can come back to the city. And I would think that that's what they're gonna want to make sure that we have in place with those identifications, the training and the resources. So then my question is, is that we would need to identify, how are we gonna pay for this? How, how do we pay for doing all of that? Where does that money come from?
So how would we, how would we pay for any of the ARPA funds? If we do it on water, if we do it on the pool, we're gonna have to have the attorneys look through that too.
No, because those are identified through capital improvement. So those are a project base, which is within your, those things are already within the legalities of what a city came to. Infrastructure, what we're looking at here is something that is not a part of the city's.
Boundaries.
Day-to-day operations. It, it would be a creating a new, a policy, a new, you know, position within the city on what we need to be done.
Excuse me, I need to stop this for a moment. If you're gonna continue to interject and sigh and make little comments, I think you need to leave because I'm quite tired of listening to you.
I can do that.
Okay. No, no, you can't. I agree.
Not do that.
One more. Please. No, but it's, but it doesn't help with our work. It doesn't help when I have to listen to all of your snide little, you know, comments and sighs and little like tics or whatever it is, to everything we're saying. It's, it's disruptive.
I agree. And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't paying attention. Paul.
What?
It's rude. On top of all of those things, it's rude.
Me signing?
Yes. All of your behaviors. Don't defend either quiet or you can leave. Well, that's the only way I can get my point across.
No, it's not. You could have talked to me calmly and I probably would have.
If you would have been respectful, then perhaps.
I can sigh if I want.
It's annoying because you're deliberately doing it. It's pretty obvious.
I can sigh if I want.
It's obvious.
Continue, please.
Well, no, no.
I need to have some resolution here or else we're gonna have to.
Okay, can you just please leave? You can go back for the other meeting maybe?
Or it's up to the mayor. I'm, I'm asking you to leave so that we can.
For signing?
The nonverbals. Again, you, it's making it difficult for us to do our work and for me to pay attention and for the councilwomen to pay attention. And we need to be able to openly and freely discuss this and share. Well, if we're expecting a backlash, it's, it's not possible. I, please.
Please what?
Please leave the building.
I'm not leaving the building. I'll go out there in the hallway, but I'm not leaving the building. Just because she's mad that I'm signing, I could care less if she just.
It's not just Kara. I'm upset as well.
Be upset. I decide for once. It's a public meeting. You don't like the side, they don't feel comfortable?
Okay. Weird. I'm sorry, Sarah. I had, no.
I, I was, I was just saying, Amli, and I didn't hear. It was just getting annoying. Sorry.
And thank you. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that when, as we're going through this, and maybe I'm putting the part for the worst, I'm just thinking that as we're, as we're putting together the policy or procedure and identifying these things to also maybe identify, we're gonna need to utilize the money from ARPA to establish these, these procedures to set up and have them legally reviewed. Because without doing that, then it's gonna come from our general fund and we're, we don't have it within our general funds to pay to, to organize the work is what I, is really what I'm.
We don't want to eat up too much of the ARPA funds. Is that sort of?
Yeah, I just want us to keep in mind that when we're looking at the contribution for, you know, and how the process, there's a cost to us getting there and there's a cost to the tools and the resources. And I don't think that, I think you all understand that. It's just, I have to say it so we make sure we're aware.
And Lee, if I might, Johnson County employees, I saw in some of the media sources, had expressed concern at the amount of paperwork and like work given involved with them. And they're set up to track and monitor, they've got a lot more staff that have got a lot more time, obviously. So that's a, that's just, that is a concern. Whereas some of these other uses, as Lee pointed out, that, that's correct. Things that are, are specifically contemplated, there's, there's far less need to spend time justifying those. Again, as my opinion, I don't care what, what the city does. I just want to make sure that what the city does, it does get in trouble for.
I'm, I, I'm with, with you there, Nathan. I do, I do. I don't, wouldn't want us to get in trouble. I, I'm just more concerned because I think, and, and even in the last, in the last council meeting, after, you know, we've heard the concerns and things like that, we even brought up, like, okay, well, this isn't just for excluded workers, this is for anybody who was excluded. And, you know, people with disabilities who didn't get those checks. People in this, and that's what Johnson County did is they opened it up to anybody, right? Who was disproportionately impacted, even opened it up to people who maybe, I think, did get a check but are so low income that they still need that, that assistance, right? And I understand the legwork and I definitely understand the legwork and everything. But one of the reasons why I wanted David here is that he, in a really short conversation, he had expressed that there are other ways that you, I mean, very, very simple ways. And he didn't go into detail where, that is completely legal, that would basically lift all this weight off of our shoulders and that he had understood more about the law and the final rule that we might have not been privy to yet. So, but he's not here, which is fine. And the other thing I wanted to say, there was one more thing, but I can't think of it. So I, I under, I, I'm gonna respect what the council wants to do, absolutely. And I, and I respect all of your, your input. I'm, I'm still grieving for our community.
And just in addition, Dana, we did talk to, I'm sorry, councilmember.
That's.
We did, so I just had briefly communicated to the mayor and to councilmember McFerrin that. Um, that Sherry, with much appreciation, has kicked off getting things going with our audit. And talking with, uh, Taylor, a woman in Miller. He, um, addressed that with Sherry as well, that there's concern. Um, he is reviewing and identifying, um, what those concerns would be from a legality. Um, and those steps that. That Johnson County has done and then what they've changed. And what that impact or how the city may or may not be able to, uh, based on from the audit group. Because I would say they probably, Johnson County probably hasn't been through that just to your audit yet on there either, so.
And his biggest concern is because with public funds, it has to be available. Not to, like Nathan is saying, it can't be like a specific group. It has to be available to the entirety. And so that is one of his concerns, but he did say that he would address it because. He just had a meeting based on this Johnson County issue, so he was gonna take a look and then just gonna let me know.
Which, that makes sense. And which is why I believe that the final rule expanded that to, to be a different category of household assistance. Cause we have a lot of mixed status families, a lot of them with children who are citizens. Who didn't get to put food on the table and, and lost loved ones and, and things like that possibly at a disproportion. Than what other families in our city did. And that's, that's all I wanna say. I don't wanna take up all, a lot more of your time. There's. So much information, obviously, out there to try to make it very clear, um. On the do's and don'ts. There's even like a frequently asked questions for immigrant status, um. From the Department of Treasury. This is also the federal one. It's not the Iowa one. And I, I mean, I'm assuming that federal. Federal laws trump state laws, but, um, right.
Unfortunately, not always, they, you know, um, I, I think that, again, I mean, you're. That, that's just the key right there. It's identifying what the proportion. Um, as you spoke, as Nathan and all of you spoke earlier, and. And again, trying to do that without even identifying the. Ethnicity of the individuals. Maybe it's just, you know, household income or, you know. Certain things, do you do not have, did you have healthcare insurance? Did you not have healthcare insurance? Did you have sick leave or vacation leave? Um, you know, those type of, to me, then that starts. Creating that, how proportionately we're excluded because you worked for an entity that did not provide. You know, sick leave, they didn't provide, you know, healthcare, they didn't, you know, this was your household income and. You know, and that money comes to a close piece of what you're saying, because you're looking at it as, as a household versus individual.
Yeah. And, and I know that they had said initially around one hundred and eighty, and then they came back into two hundred. And so because this is such a, a hidden undercurrent. That we don't really know how many people it, it actually applies to. How do we know it isn't four hundred? I mean, if you.
Well, that's easy, you know.
Cap it at two hundred and. But it's still inequitable, no matter what.
Is that second half gonna be at meetings, you know, like?
You know, I mean, it's, it's still inequitable. Um, so I think it's better to put it in. The infrastructures that we have already, because that way. What is meant to do in, in all simplities is for the community to benefit. So. Even if you have people that can utilize it who are citizens, but they're well below the poverty level. Then, uh, I mean, you've got to identify those people as well, and they may not. Come forward in, into this group. Maybe, maybe people. Are under the radar because they're not associated with the church, or they're not, they don't work with. Anybody that's in that group, you know, I mean, there's so many.
So given, given the limited funds, as we've discussed before, given the limited funds that we have. And what, like, what is your proposal then?
What, um, I'm finding out recently is that. If there's so much, there's been so much concern about, um. The utilization of mutual aid for fire and emergency services. But nobody has realized that. In essence, we're using that right now. We have been for the last several months. For county to come and help us meet our police needs.
Well, it's not just our county, it's other, other, um, fire departments in other counties.
No, I'm talking about the PD. I'm talking about only the PD. We have not, you know, well, I'm just saying, there was so much hullabaloo about using mutual aid. But what people are negating to understand is, and and it's coming to light, is we're utilizing it in that sense. Because we have been so short-staffed with officers in this community that. Many times we haven't had an officer on duty. So it is. If somebody has an emergency, they call dispatch and that's county.
Right. No, and I agree. And I think we talked about these, like, for hiring bonuses or things like this, but. I, I don't believe it's a good idea for a salary or anything like for the additional officers.
I thought we were talking about in addition to, to the ARPA, to the.
Oh, I, no, I thought it was within the ARPA funds.
No, I mean, like, cause we had several things listed and this is only a little. Portion of percentage of it. I thought that the. The bonuses and hiring was in a di, like, another portion of the funds. I must have misunderstood. I didn't know what this would have been instead of. Providing the assistance to the households. It would be given to, to the bonuses and stuff like that. I, I just misunderstood.
Well, and I think I, I must have too, because I, I also thought it was like in addition to, like, we set that two hundred, you know, the. Two hundred by seven hundred and said, okay, plus five percent or whatever. And then we've still got. Some others, yeah, right. So, so is that, is that kind of what you're thinking more? Or were you thinking about our salary or other things?
Initially, yeah, that's what we were going to do, but now we absolutely need, I think. To focus on, if you wanna focus on emergency response in this community. And being able to have what we, resources we need. I think. On top of infrastructure, we need to, I think we need to beef up our emergency. Uh, personnel.
And that would be reserves for maybe looking at training. Again, I'll go back to. The reserve for training with our police department, um, if we're going to continue to hire, you know, or train paramedic. Um. You know, those emergency responses, um, if we have an employee-based program within those departments. And not just dedicate funds to the police department, but also to EMS service to sustain. Uh, because again, just like with the police department, the EMS people could pretty much walk in anywhere right now. I mean, it's. The need is so high out there for paramedics and MTS, um, and that as well, so.
And, and the whole, you know, eventually, I think this town is going to have to just basically hire. That these, these resources, whether it's fire, emergency response, uh, paramedic. You know, obviously you do it for PD, but ultimately we're gonna have to because the pool of volunteers is shrinking and it's not just. Our community, it's communities across the United States. People, it's just shrinking. So I think we're gonna have to gear up.
Well, I think even what I learned through grant writing for volunteer departments, I, again. Making sure that you have the resources and the dollars for training. That makes it attractive to those that wanna, you know, that's a part of the attraction to become a volunteer because you. You have the funding to make sure they're getting trained to do that. You have the, the gear and the equipment and to make sure that. The individuals that are volunteering, they're going in, um. Likewise, I mean, I look at the reserve, um, police department and again, there's another, for the most part, a volunteer group of individuals. But that's gone away, but we at one time depended greatly on the reserve because that helped out with. You know, large events that came into our community and, I mean, kudos to Chief with the tractor key, but. Again, that was, those are events that we had in the past been able to pull from about ten or twelve reserves. And again, that's not, it's just the way of, the way things are. So again, looking at. What potential is there to make that attraction, the sustainability. Uh, and, and those resources to, to build that back up.
And those training dollars can also be used, I mean, Eric, the chief Wurlington actually. But when he's recruiting people, being able to offer some specialized training, but maybe they're not getting elsewhere. That's why having those training dollars there. That may be the reason that, that, that he can bring somebody in, because he knows. He or she knows, man, I'm, I'm gonna be able to train. Firearms instructor or.
Like a DRE.
You got cats trainings to do, but, you know, we, we, we've talked about. You know, that's one of those recruiting tools, trying to bring people in, especially to a small apartment and try to keep them, is. Give them things that they're not getting in those large departments, which would be giving some of these, uh, uh, additional trainings and certifications and a little more.
You're investing in the officers, the specific officers and the other, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out.
No, you're not.
But, um, something that I would also like to make sure that we keep in mind too is. With all the development we're talking about with the community, our police department is already too small for our current size community. And I have a whole presentation I could give you on that, but if. As we continue to grow, our whole EMS crew, everything, fire tables, we all have to grow. So we've gotta look at what that long term looks like. Fix it right now so we can get by, but then what does it look like for the long term?
Yeah. And one thing I, I would wanna add to, if this is the route that we go, and if Eric, if you were our, our chief. Um, it would be a much bigger concern, but because I know you and because I have worked with you at the university in. How conscious you are about policing and how valuable community policing is and stuff like that. I would love to see also additional training for officers because they are serving a majority minority community. Um, you know, in that aspect, so we're, we're not. Um, doing more damage than good. We're preparing our officers to protect themselves, to protect our citizens, things like that.
But expanding it on from there even to our EMS, I mean. Cause I know, you know, the translators that you had recommended, you know, utilize, when they can utilize those and, and. Uh, it's just those resources and, and it's not just with. You know, the majority of a population, but I know back when we spoke with West Liberty Foods a few years ago. I mean, that was something West Liberty Foods, um, you know, from the community policing perspective was trying to. You know, build that relationship with individuals that come from countries that live with a fear. Of police or, you know, individuals in that type of service and then they're not apt to. Discuss when things are going on in their homes or.
Yep.
Um, so again, you know, building, uh, those relationships and having those tools and resources. To allow us to bridge some of those, those gaps.
Well, I, I do, I remember when I was a kid and we did have a reserve, um, police force and. You know, as far as the fire department, I mean, there, we have lots of Latino volunteers that. Usually can make themselves available to translate when needed, but I would love to see more of that for the police.
We have two reserves right now.
Great.
And almost all of our extra shifts, like if there's an event here, then as long as we have one reserve that makes everything right. So he chooses not to do it anymore.
Right, right.
Forgive my ignorance, do we pay them when they do that? That is, that's that hard time.
The venue thing.
All the venue does, yeah, okay.
But it's just having a person.
That we can say, yes, call this person.
Right now, we have two with one of them. We almost exclusively use her for translation because of her personal life and work. But that's about what we, she's able to give us, which we're happy to have. And the other reserve is a little, except a hundred percent of those extra shifts. Cause we're so short-staffed that the officers just don't have time like that, that personalize.
Yeah.
That's part of why we have so much trouble.
Well, the good news is, is at one time we did have a good, um, base, a Hispanic base of, uh, officers that were reserves. Um, the good news is, is they went on to become police officers. So, I mean. So that, that was a benefit, but at the same time, maybe if there was an opportunity to offer up. Something for sustaining them and making them, you know, again, I couldn't agree with you more. We, we do have a. A very solid chief and who's organized and has some good supervision and leadership. I think that makes a big difference, uh, with who he's attracting and, and who's looking at hiring and building his team. But again, I mean, he's limited when he has to be out, you know, patrolling and, and then you're trying to put that administrative work together in order to. To create those things that, that adds to some company, you know, it's difficult.
Yeah. So, um, I wanna. Ask one more question too, just if we're. Well, first of all. What are our next steps? What are we, or is this gonna be like another meeting and then, you know, or how is this going?
I, I would just like to present it to councils, that you know, that we're. Under. Further review, you know, that. I don't know if you, I mean, you're welcome, we're welcome to say different. Pers- perspectives, but from my perspective, under further review, I, uh, just assume. Keep it within what we can guarantee we know without any, uh, risk later on. And then be able to, uh, use it if, for the city infrastructure, use it for the PD and training. For emergency personnel and, uh, first respond, you know. Uh, and then how we, I think we had talked about it in three or four different avenues. But I, I'm just really apprehensive about. Utilizing it for how we had originally talked. I know we want, we all want to see that happen. But I think we're gonna run into troubles down the road, because this is something that's very risky.
Councilmember, sorry, I, I, just a question, um, something, you know, some type of a compromise. Um, could we. We'll say, take half the funds and ident, and be able to identify them internally right now. First. If council agrees to look at what you've just talked about with the emergency services and. And some of those internal things that typically would come from property tax dollars, but minimize, um. What you can do, uh, because you, the tax, you know, the property tax that we're levied at. Is an additional funding and then set aside the other portion to allow for, again. Talking with the auditor, um, and, you know, being able to, you know. Look at those opportunities that Johnson County is doing and see if those are things that. Can actually fit for our community. Um, that we, again, I know it's difficult because, you know, I'm like you, I, I certainly empathize and. I don't have a problem about us providing those funds, uh, except for, you know, legality wise, we have to answer for them. Um, but maybe just kind of look at it in, uh. Two phases, you know, phase one, we focus on internally. And then just give yourselves a little more time to make sure you.
When we get the next.
Done the whole process to make sure, uh, that way. When, if, if and when it has to be communicated that the possibility is not there. That you do have all the facts, that, that you know, that you've gone the distance to make sure. So, I mean, I guess that would be my perspective from sitting over here.
No, and I think, Lee, that's exactly what I've been trying to strive for. Just, I'm not a lawyer. It's like, just to do it on my own has been. Um, really time consuming. And so like, I love that idea. I also wanna respect. Councilwoman McFerrin as being the chair and, and, um. You know, respect her leadership, so, and whatever the council wants to move forward with. So I am, I'm, at this point, I'm open.
Um, and I also think you guys are in a good position right now because I am working with the auditor and I talk to him frequently.
And he's there based in mechanics though, or mid, uh.
Marshals.
Aren't they heavily populated?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's, I feel like right now where we're at, it would be beneficial because. I'm gonna be able to get more information, the more that I talk to him. Right now, we're kind of limited on what I have for information. Other than what Nathan provided.
Right.
So I feel like once I can. So I feel like once I can dig in a little bit deeper and tend to talk to him, once he's had some time to go through everything, I can provide you guys with more information.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
But since we, we definitely have half of it right now, I think utilizing that half. Um, with. You know, what we can do right now with infrastructure and, and emergency services, plus we need a. I do believe we need an emergency plan. I don't think we've had an emergency plan put in place.
That's one of the things that we're working on. I've been getting some samples and I did reach out to. The police chief up in Marshalltown as a chief that I hired. Uh, a, a, a number of years ago. And he said that, you know, I asked him about their plan. He said they didn't have a plan either. And Bowman and Miller's right there and they did there, so he's supposed to be sending me a copy of their plan. And I've got a really good plan from Washington that I reviewed and a few other ones, so. Now, now the chief's back, well, that's probably something that, that we'll be focusing on and talking to our other emergency folks to. Sit down and, you know, try to get the best out of all those. Beneficial for us.
When something does happen, like a, you know, another. Monolith or another direct show or whatever it is, we at least have something in place if we do have a breakdown. You know, and will, it's gonna cost a certain amount to get that in place as well, so. I think, you know, just getting our, our base resources in place. Right now is, is important. Get that in, put that under a belt.
Well, the last thing I would, I, I would say if I can. Try to understand um, what David was saying um, is. You know, yes, there's a lot of rules and regulations for ARPA. They just wanna help communities that were impacted. Say if we had an emergency, a tornado, God forbid, hit our town. And we made the community center a shelter. And the government provided FEMA funds and water and supplies. Are we gonna push those people out that might be undocumented instead of? Support them and, and help them in that. I know it's, it's not exactly the same, but to me, I'm thinking like. These folks went to work every day and continue to. Buy groceries at our stores and gas at our stations and everything and contribute. And they're still suffering, but the government, and I know we are restricted, but I guess my. Um, frustration is mostly with the federal government um, by leaving them out in the first place. And I guess that's what I would end on, is that.
And, and with that, even though this specific. Treasury rules, the specific, you know, plan handed down by the federal. You know, executive order to hand, you know, the, this, this cash in hand. It still doesn't make up for. The rules and regulations that come down from the judicial aspect of enforcement. You know, whether it's immigration or labor, um, you know, uh.
Labor law.
Labor laws, you know, so. Government is slow and arduous. It's because it's so complicated and um. It, I think it's difficult to try and. Umbrella a lot of things in when you're dealing with. Very complex things like immigration, uh, health and human services and the social, you know, aspect. So that's why I think. Being such a small town that we are. It's better to utilize our resources as best we are able to do. And not put more burden on to our staff in order to create more policy. Or more expense to vet it through attorneys or accountants.
I agree to a certain extent, Kara, and I know that I don't have a vote or anything like that, but. You gotta start somewhere too. And if you can't make change on a local level, where are you gonna make the change? Because as you said. It's arduous, it's huge, it's a beast. The, the higher up in government you go, and so I, I'm not. Agreeing or disagreeing, I'm just. Like, at, at what point are we brave and try something new? I mean, and, and I, I'm not saying that I disagree with you on your concerns about this because at the end of the day too, I don't wanna see. And I've said this from the beginning, I don't wanna see any of those people hurt. When in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-four, we get a new administration or what if we do, you know?
Right, right.
Um, and that has been my concern, you know, since it was pointed out to me, but um, but. To, to me. I, and again, with the, with policing and public safety and, and emergency and, you know, things like this, like, these are, these are. Places we need to put resources and this would be a great place to put some resources. I'm also thinking though, like. For, again, for our whole community too, you know, and so like, and, and I know it was um. I know, I know we are not social workers and as, as was pointed out by a former council member, but I, I, I. I do believe that there's still something we can do um. For mental health for, because that's huge in this pandemic and experts are only just now scratching. The surface of what this has done. Talk to people in the schools, talk to the teachers, talk to people around town. And so I, I also, um, I don't want that to be forgotten about because it was my idea. And, or because I, I've been talking about it and because there's issues there personally. And I don't want that to go away. I don't want that to not be a thing. And I understand we're not social workers, but we can partner with people who are. And so there's a whole section in that opinion, if you ever have some spare time. That talks about how to implement the ARPA funds um, for mental health and, and behavioral health. We wouldn't even, I mean, have to do it with, you know, some of the things that I was, you know, talking about, but um. I don't know, I just, and so I just wanted to make sure that we didn't end this meeting without, because we had talked about that. And three weeks ago or four weeks ago or whenever it was, it seemed. Like, you know, we all thought that that was good. And so if, if you've been rethinking or other members of council are rethinking, that's fine, but. Um. I would, you know. Yeah, I would, I guess I would just like to, to hear what your thoughts are on that. I mean, and it doesn't have to be now. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if you have other thoughts, it can be an email or a text.
Like I said, I, you know, I agree that it needs to be helped, but where I disagree is. Uh, the city spearheading this.
It wouldn't be spearheading, you know? It would be a not, a national nonprofit organization spearheading.
You know, I, I just, you know, the city, the city only has so many resources and so many staff. Staffing to do all of this. And whatever we do has to be within the confines of our personnel policies. Uh, you know, our legal authority and um. You know, not to say that if there's still this big push to wanna help. Um, this avenue, help these people. That can still be done, but I, I think it needs to be done with like a community service organization or civic organization.
That's, that's absolutely.
Yeah, that's what, what I've said since the get-go.
But yeah, we're just gonna get a space for them, like a building.
Have, having the city, you know, just. I- invest uh, funds that really have to go to an entirety is just a little.
What's the, um, what, um, and I'm not, and maybe Nathan can answer this question because I have not. I haven't visited the county. Uh, I know the county had um. Revitalize the, the uh, the health and wellness services there at the county. And again, from, and what I hear is, again, i- it's. Education for, you know, that emergency service or the entire staff or, and then taking it to the community. And um, because I, I, I've seen this too. I mean, the, the statistics that are coming out. Um, for mental wellness uh, after the pandemic is, it, it's growing fast and it's. You know, it's snowballing and again, it's just maybe part of that phase is. Taking a look at, you know, where can we, where can we start with that education and then. Where do we take it with our communications and say. Our communications, we're gonna run a whole series and here are our resources. And maybe from there, we'll get more input from our public saying that we want, we want something here within our community. What can we do?
I mean, yes, but, yes, but, and again, but what I would say, I mean, it would, it. It would serve the entire community. It's not picking, it's not picking out, but just, and, and I. I don't, I guess I, I don't know how you can say, no, let's not help people feel better about the shit that we've all been through for the past three and a half years. So, um.
Because it was just, we were.
Because you hate me, like.
No.
No, I, you know what? It is seven nineteen. I am going to think, I'm going to, you may continue discussing, but I am going to take a little break before our seven thirty meeting. And so I would like to do that.
I don't think we adjourned.
Yeah, let's just adjourn.